It is 6:05 PM. I call this meeting of the Miami Township Board of Trustees to order. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Posey.
Present.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Culp.
Here.
Chief Stegelmeyer, you have the reading of casualties.
Good evening, Board. The following is a list of the first responder casualties for the period of December 21st, 2022 through January the 2nd, 2023. Deputy Sheriff Corey D. McElroy, Garrett County Sheriff's Office, Maryland, end of watch December 21st, 2022. K-9 Jack, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, California, end of watch December 22nd, 2022. Corporal Ray Hamilton, Oaklusa County Sheriff's Office, Florida, end of watch December 24th, 2022. And Deputy Sheriff Isaiah Cordero, Riverside County Sheriff's Department, California, end of watch December 29th, 2022.
Thank you, Chief. Will you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. We have no guests or presentations. The first item of business is appointment of a fiscal officer. I'd like to remind everyone that Mr. Newell resigned in early December, and under the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Trustees has 30 days to appoint a fiscal officer before it goes to the probate court determining the fiscal officer will be. We received three applications from individuals who all brought something very different to the position, and all brought something very valid. They're all long-term and longtime township residents with serious public service behind them and different skills to the position. But at this point, I will entertain a motion to bring forth Resolution Number 001-2023, a resolution to appoint a fiscal officer in consideration of vote.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution 001-2023, a resolution to appoint a fiscal officer. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees appoints Greg Klingerman to the position of fiscal officer, unexpired term effective January 3, 2023. And be it further resolved, the appointment of Greg Klingerman to the position of fiscal officer, unexpired term, shall be subject to all of the legal requirements of the Ohio Revised Code for such appointments.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? I'd like to make some discussion. Again, all three candidates brought something very significant to the role, and any of them could have been chosen positively by this board. Mr. Klingerman has some experience that wasn't matched by the others. That's not to say it's inaccessible or indifferent than the others. It's just a function of his individual background. But I would encourage the other applicants to keep participating in the township because public service is important. You've both demonstrated that, and I look forward to seeing you at future township meetings. Any other discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
I'll abstain.
At this point, Ms. Bogner will swear in the new fiscal officer. Mr. Klingerman, will you please come forward? Mr. Klingerman, at this time, we'd invite you to take your seat next to Mr. McCord. We will not ask you to administer the meeting until you've gone through the training. The next item on agenda is the election of officers of the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees has a president and a vice president. At this time, I nominate John Morris for the role of president for 2023. Is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. McCord.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
I abstain.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Posey as vice president.
I will second. Any discussion?
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
I abstain.
With that transition, I will transfer the terminial gavel and functional gavel to Mr. Morris for the administration of the meeting. I will not be changing seats at this time due to my recent leg surgery.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Chief Stegelmeyer, you have Resolution 2, a resolution to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association.
Good evening, Board. In your package, you should have all the information regarding the new contract for the Police Supervisor Union, which is the OPBA. This is a three-year agreement that will go into effect January 1 of 2023 and will go until December 31 of 2025. And if there are any questions regarding this, I'd be glad to answer them at this
Just to point out that there wasn't a prior executive session where each member of the trustees did review this document in full. I don't want the public to be led to believe that we are not actually discussing this item. We have discussed it in prior session. Public comment period. I will open for public comment. This is the portion of meeting where you, the Miami residents of Miami Township, are invited to share your thoughts with the Board. Please know this time has been set aside for the Board to listen to you. Your comments are valued and will be taken into careful consideration. The Board will not engage in any dialogue at this time. Presentations are limited to five minutes each. Is there anyone from the public wishing to come forward and make any comments? Please state your name and address for the record. I need to pull that microphone down.
Pamela Snobin, in Riverside, 5696 Public 8 Drive. And this is my second opportunity to speak to you guys. And I just wanted to say my concerns are still present with Myers' self-governing. There are points in time where things are quiet, but I still hear from many other people in my association and to adjoining associations of noises that I can hear when I'm outside of my condo. And so it is still very much a concern of our purpose towards the noise model that they are adding additional business. And by the way, you guys did do a good job of clearing the roads. I just want to say that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to come forward during the public comment period? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period, move to consideration of vote for resolutions and motions. I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2, which is a resolution to approve a three-year collective bargaining agreement with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Our next item on the agenda is a number of public hearings. The first public hearing is regarding zoning case 452-22. I will make a motion to open the public hearing for zoning case 452-22. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Zoning case 45-22 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. The applicant will be given an opportunity for a presentation. All proponents, those for the plan, will be able to speak. All opponents will be given an opportunity to speak. A time limit of three minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. Please give your name and address for the record. The Board will close the public hearing prior to taking any action. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
They have.
Do you have a recommendation for the Miami Township Zoning Commission? Would you please review your report at this time?
I do have a recommendation. Thank you, Board. Good evening. First zoning case for you tonight is a plan development modification to the -- pardon me, making sure my slides are in the right order. They are. Plan Development Regulation Amendment to the Austin East Plan Development. This plan development was rezoned and approved early in 2022. We'll take a quick look here. Again, the property is zoned in the SPPUD, Special Purpose Plan Unit Development District, is directly across from Austin Landing on the east side of State Route 741, surrounded by a number of apartment communities. The Zoning Commission recommended denial of this case in a three-to-one vote. To quickly summarize some of the conversation items, the Zoning Commission referenced in their decision compared to the original plan. They're listed on the screen. I will run through them. I'll kind of double back and look at them at the end. But again, they had special concerns related to the location orientation of newly proposed uses to the original plan development. So we'll go through the requests in particular. Shown on the screen is the original approved preliminary development plan that was proposed and approved as part of the rezoning request. The parcels labeled here were referenced specifically in the development standards to very specifically approve the uses as shown on the plan. It was supposed to be a mixed commercial development. I have the original purpose of the plan development listed here. Again, it is intended to be a mixed commercial development that provides intentional and cohesive design and brings both coordinated motor vehicle and pedestrian access to Austin East and the surrounding apartments, as well as uses that are intended to serve those apartment communities in some way, provide either convenience or compatibility to those multifamily residential uses, while again also being a state route-facing development. So the specific request was to modify parcel four and three. Parcel one and parcel two have remained the same. Parcel one is a bank. Parcel two is a drive-through restaurant. Parcel three was originally the mixed retail office building. That is now requested to be additionally a car wash. Parcel four was originally where the car wash was proposed, is now proposed to be a gas station. So to look sort of one-to-one at the original plan, this will do a better job of comparing the original approved plans with the requested uses. Part of the discussion with the applicant was centered around a discussion with Kroger, as their gas station is located across the street. Supposedly, a representative from Kroger had referenced to the developer that they were having issues with parking at their building across the street for the main grocery store. So there was conversation about moving the gas station component over to the Austin East development. So again, that is the primary cause of the change, again, in shifting the car wash back in the lot. Staff has not yet had conversations with Kroger about a parking issue to determine when there are parking issues. That's mostly around holidays at peak times, or if this is a very frequent issue. Certainly, staff would be more than happy to have that conversation, but we have not yet heard exactly what the parking issue is at Kroger.
So if I can ask a clarifying question, Mr. Carlson, you're saying that there has been speculation that this parcel four, that would be a gas station if this were to be approved, would be a movement of the Kroger gas station?
That was what was stated at the public hearing for the Zoning Commission.
But we've had -- but the township has had no discussion with Kroger to say that is their intention?
Not to date, no, sir. And we have not heard from them about the specific concerns across the street. So certainly, as part of this modification, one of the concerns is that currently, this would permit two gas stations, one on either side. There is no requirement yet, unless there was some stipulation. But again, staff feels that there are several further conversations to be had before a determination of that movement should be made with the applicant and with Kroger, certainly. So then, talking further about use compatibility, the Zoning Commission had several concerns, one with the gas station's orientation. Austin Commons Apartments is being built on the parcel directly south of here. One stating concerns with headlights being oriented directly at the windows of the residence, as the pumps would be oriented sort of in a vertical fashion, so the cars would be pointing directly at Austin Commons Apartments. Similar concerns with parcel three, the relocation of the car wash to that side. The vertical orientation sort of unscreened the vacuum cleaner area that is commonly associated with car washes from apartments, where previously, as you can see on the original plan, they were north of any apartments. They would be shielded on the east by any other buildings, so sort of one of the primary noise makers was sort of isolated. So the Commission did have concerns over both parcel three and four. And then here to show you, the applicant did provide a cross-section of the development, trying to show what the setback may look like from the gas station to Austin Commons to the south. Certainly, we would require significant landscape buffering if the modification were to be made. The staff still has concerns, and the Commission seconded those concerns in their motion. So again, finally, Commission felt that the original plan did provide a mixed retail-type building that would provide some walkability and usage for the apartment complex surrounding the building, rather than changing to another purely auto-oriented type use, which certainly would provide convenience for the residents, but again, cuts out that walkability factor. And then the location orientation of the car wash and gas stations were key concerns. And then finally, with placement of high-traffic uses directly across from one another on the eastern entrance to the apartments, with a drive-through restaurant and a car wash, again, very high turnover uses, sharing an entrance would potentially create a pretty high-traffic area at the end of that roundabout. So again, that is a recommendation of the Commission. If the Board has any questions for me, it'd be happy to discuss.
Yeah, if we actually adopt the Zoning Commission regulation, because there has not been confirmation from Kroger yet regarding their desires as to this project, is there a time limit in which this application can be refiled or resubmitted?
Certainly. I mean, they can reapply at any time for additional modifications or the same modification. The applicant can apply at any time to modify the plan development.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Carlson? All right.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the applicant. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. George Flynn, Flynn Property Group, 9378 Kemper Grove Lane, Loveland, Ohio, 45140. Appreciate your time tonight, and certainly appreciate working with staff. And before I make any additional comments, I do want to say that staff did request to speak to Kroger. We couldn't set that up, given the time of the year with holidays coming up and that type of thing. So apologize to staff that we couldn't set it up prior to this evening, and certainly open to continue the dialogue. With me tonight are representatives of Kroger, and so I just want to leave that open. If you all cannot get enough -- all the questions you need to get answered from myself or the folks at Kroger tonight, we are certainly open to coming back before you at some other time. Just a couple comments. I do want to mention that -- and can this -- is this the one? I just want to shift to the site plan itself, Alex?
Yes.
Thank you. I do want to mention a couple things. One, there's been some concerns about walkability and connectivity. The overall development is designed for that. It's got sidewalks on both sides of the roadway. So I think one thing that came up in the Zoning Commission meeting was, you know, the walkability is not there, but the walkability is certainly there. Okay? So you can traverse from those apartment communities to our project and across the street. And that's, I thought, part of the whole beauty about this project was to create better access for the apartment communities, not only for our development, but also for the development across the street. Second thing I'd like to mention is the orientation of the car wash. We could shift that, and I think I mentioned that in the Zoning Commission meeting, but we could flip the building, if you will, and put the building towards the eastern portion of the boundary line so that the vacuums could be on the other side, and the building could shield the vacuums from the properties to the east. That being said, I am going to ask the representative of Kroger to come up. I'll be available for any questions going forward, and I certainly appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
I know this can go down lower. That's a good thing. My name is Ann McBride. My address is 5721 Dragon Way, Suite 300, Cincinnati, 45227. And I am the zoning consultant that's working with Kroger on this project, on parcel four. So right now, as you all know, Kroger is located just across the street in a building that's just under 87,000 square feet. And the store does really well. If you were there anytime, you know that that store is really doing well. So even with the pickup spaces that Kroger has put in to allow for the online shopping, which allows customers to turn over a little quicker than those that are going into the store, parking is a huge issue at that store all the time. I heard somebody ask, when is it AM, PM, peak? Is it Saturdays, Fridays, whatever? Parking is pretty much a problem at that store the entire time. And if you have had the opportunity to use your Kroger fuel points at that fuel center, you will know that it is an exceptionally tight layout. I thought tonight, right, I'll stop, I'll get my gas on the way here and see how that works myself. It is exceptionally tight in terms of where it comes into the parking, existing parking field. You've got cars backing out, you've got cars trying to get into the fuel center. And it isn't the end of the month, you know, where everybody's juggling to use up their fuel points. So, excuse me. So what Kroger is proposing to do is to pick up basically the fuel center and move it across the street to parcel four. They would expand the number of pumps, islands, from five to nine. And we obviously would have to come back to you all for a final development plan that would include design items and landscaping and lighting and so forth. But it would allow for a bigger fuel center. It would allow their existing store to function much better with adequate parking and allow for proper access, both for the fuel truck as well as their customers, for queuing and stacking and so forth on that site. I know that staff is recommending a convenience store as a part of this. Kroger does have, I would call, convenience items for sale at their fuel centers. They have pop and chips and nuts and stuff like that. So there is, you know, there is some food product and drinks and so forth that are available there. The site itself just simply isn't large enough to put a convenience store, I don't feel a convenience store, with the fuel center, with the required parking on it, and be able to still navigate the tanker, the deliveries that would go to a C-store, and so forth. So I guess we're here to try to address questions that the trustees or staff might have. I'm sorry, I just recently got involved with this, so I'm hoping I can answer your questions. And it may be that maybe the best thing tonight to do is to allow us to sit down with your staff and discuss with them concerns or whatever that they may have. I feel that we can adequately buffer that, the proposed fuel station, the location, to the adjacent multifamily that's going up to the south. If you look right now at their fuel station today, it is immediately adjacent to the flats apartments. And I would hope that you haven't had any complaints from those residents or the manager of that facility, but the fuel center likely would be closer, I didn't scale it, but would be closer to the flats as it is today than the proposed use would be. So if you have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those or...
Questions?
I think one of the issues that Mr. Carlson was raising is that the orientation of the gas pumps would be directly facing the apartments, whereas as the flats, it's facing perpendicular to the apartments, so there's not any direct light shining from cars, at least at a head-on angle. Is that a concern that could be addressed through further site planning, or is that inevitable for the configuration of this lot?
Yeah, no, I've been working with Kroger on zoning issues since before they started their fuel centers. And when you look at the height of car headlights and so forth, I think that's something that we could very adequately buffer to the south in terms of fencing and landscaping and so forth. You know, it's a relatively quieter use than other uses that are in the area. There's no drive-through, there's no loudspeakers, there's no equipment and so forth that's outside. But I think that it could be buffered, and we certainly could work with staff on any final development plan level to assure that and reach their satisfaction.
So you just, if you could please clarify, you just mentioned you're working with Kroger. You are not a Kroger employee?
No, I am not. I am a consultant that's retained by Kroger.
And you are employed by whom? Just yourself, self-employed, or do you work for a firm?
No. I have a planning and zoning company called McBride Dale Clarion.
And I guess on that note, are you aware if Kroger has any signed agreements with Mr. Flynn?
I am not aware of that. I do know that they would very much like to be in this location, I will tell you that, because, simply because they like to have their fuel centers in close proximity to their stores. And they are simply busting at the seam with regards to parking on that store.
I think the Tera Data building is still available.
And just one other note. If that was to be coming to fruition, where the fuel center could move across the street, they would pick up about 60 parking spaces in that area, which is huge.
Thank you.
So have you shopped at that grocery store?
I have been in it, yeah. I live in Cincinnati, so it's not my regular Kroger store, but I have been in that store.
Okay. But do you shop at it? Do you park in that parking lot?
Have I parked in there? Yes, I have.
I mean, so it was full when you parked in the parking lot?
I couldn't tell you that it wasn't tonight, so it was a while ago.
Okay. So it's never been full, and I live in the township when I park in that parking lot. And by the design, in Austin Landing, it's a tight fit for that entire piece of property. I don't care whether you're talking about the gas station, the parking lot, or the store. So that's just something that Kroger signed on to from the very beginning. But it works. You're talking about doubling the size of the gas station on the other side of the road. So I don't think this is just about where the lights hit exactly, et cetera, but it's about a much larger gas station, I think. I'm guessing that the zoning board takes that into account in some way, and, you know, quality of life around that area and the access, et cetera. You -- I think there was something else. So I'm going to support the zoning board on this. You know, Alex, Mr. Carlson, is trained to understand what works and what does not work in a community. So if the zoning board takes a hard look at this project with a few changes, and they say, yeah, this is going to work for Miami Township, then I'll support that. But otherwise, I think there's some things here that probably need to be
Thank you, Mr. Culp. Thank you. Now we will ask any proponents who wish to come forward. Those in favor of the plan who wish to give testimony in this case. Seeing none, anyone opposed to the plan would like to come forward. Seeing none. We will now make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case 452-22. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I will make a motion on Resolution 003-2023, a resolution to adopt a Plan Development Regulation Amendment to the Austin East Plan Development under zoning case 452-22 for land-zoned SPPUD, Special Purpose Plan Unit Development District. Therefore be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees denies the Plan Development Regulation Amendment under zoning case 452-22 and upholds the Zoning Commission recommendation. Is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? I would just also like to reiterate what Mr. Culp said. I'm very interested in development, but I don't think that the way this is being presented with this gas station as it's being presented and/or the positioning of the car wash are in the best interest of the residents in that area.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
I will make a motion to open public hearing for zoning case 417-14. Is there a second?
I will second.
Mr. Morris.
Aye.
Mr. Posey.
Aye.
Mr. Culp.
Aye.
Zoning case 417-14 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report. The applicant will give a presentation. All proponents will be asked, given an opportunity to speak. All opponents will be given an opportunity to speak. A time limit of three minutes will be placed on each of the speakers. When you come forward, please give your name and address for the record. The Board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements of this hearing been met?
They have.
Do you have a recommendation for the Miami Township Zoning Commission that you could share and review your report at this time?
I do. Thank you, Board. Second case for you tonight is the final development plan in ZC 417-14. This is the Austin Park Apartments Plan Development. This contains Austin Park as well as the outlots directly in front of it. Previously, the plan development, the Austin Park Plan Development, was modified to allow a drive-through use with the preliminary plan modification for Duncan at the southernmost parcel. parcel along State Route 741 and the property zone PD5, planned mixed-use development. Zoning Commission recommended approval and a four-to-zero vote with two stipulations. Both stipulations were related to the fact that some additional final feedback is pending from ODOT and Montgomery County Engineers Office. In both of these cases, there are minor comments related to having to apply for right-of-way permits to make sidewalk connections or bike path connections. So this is just a little bit of flexibility the zoning commission recommended, should ODOT or the county recommend, minor adjustments to the location of some of these paths, but otherwise had no specific recommendations. From a staff perspective, I will say that the Duncan, the Duncan Development Team has worked very diligently with the zoning commission and with staff to bring forward modified, improved plans throughout the process. They've taken in consideration from the neighboring apartment building related to screening and concerns that they had with the tree line and where it falls, and otherwise, again, have made significant improvements. One key area where they did this was a proposed patio area. Again, to take a look back, the patio area is just on the north side of the building and would connect directly to, through a sidewalk, directly to Austin Park Apartments to the east and the bike path to the west. This patio area, they've planned a stamped brick-looking asphalt, integrated bike racks, umbrellas, seating. They've made pretty great strides in making this a public seating area that would look very good along the bike path and would serve the apartment complex to the east to have a walkable outdoor destination for coffee, you know, restaurant, donuts, et cetera. Again, they've gone above and beyond in terms of landscaping. They took minimum requirements and ramped that up, particularly on the south side facing Waldron Park. One key concern was any potential cars in the drive-through lane as they border Waldron Park. Part of that, again, has some birmingham area you can see in the shaded area as well as pretty significant landscaping along that frontage. Again, they've sort of screened the parking lot along the frontage, but again, in layers from Austin Park, where there's an existing hedge row to help break up that parking lot and break up the building as would be viewed from the apartments, as well as State Route 741 and the bike path. Here's another view, there's a look at some of the birmingham that they're proposing to, again, elevate that landscaping and improve the buffering, as well as a view of the patio to the north and its connectivity into the parking field and then a crossover to Austin Park. Their lighting plan meets all requirements of Article VII, lighting temperature and lighting levels. Here are views at the elevations. They're substantially brick material with some stamped concrete material that has sort of a wood grain appearance playing into the Duncan branding. One item here would be leaning into the Miami Township runs on Duncan, so we would have some Miami Township-specific branding that would play into Duncan's typical branding.
So where in this picture it says "City," that would say Miami Township?
Yes, it would say Miami Township, yes, sir. Here's a view of their improved signage. Their initial sign was sort of just a standard brick base. One item the zoning commission asked was, again, this is right on the bike path, very visible on 741, what could be done to have a more creative sign? They came back with a significantly landscaped bed just along the bike path connection with a more creative sign design. And here's a good view of the existing hedge row on the eastern side of the property between Austin Park. Again, part of the plan would be to install landscaping sort of in layers from that to create, again, a layered buffer from the apartment as the upper floors are looking down into the lot, so it isn't just going from open field to only asphalt. So again, zoning commission recommended approval with only the stipulations that minor modifications may be made should ODOT or Montgomery County have any comments in the right-of-way permit process to make connections to sidewalks. Otherwise, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to discuss.
No questions.
Thank you, Board.
Is the applicant present to give a presentation?
My name is Cara Burkard. I'm at 5335 Far Hills Avenue in Kettering, 45429. I'm here on behalf of the Gilligan Company. They are the applicant that, and the franchisee-owner of this particular Duncan. As Mr. Carlson mentioned, we've worked extensively with staff to present a plan that we think is going to be a very nice presenting site to your community. Everyone loves their coffee and their donuts, so we're quite excited about the location in front of the apartment complex, next to the park, next to the bike path. We think it's going to be not only a good location for us, but also a good location for the community. We've enhanced our landscaping, we've enhanced our signage, we've worked with staff to give you a product that we're proud of and we think that you would be too. There was some discussion in the last meeting about, we had proposed Austin Park runs on Duncan, and someone suggested that it should say Miami Township runs on Duncan. And we're happy to oblige with that branding and our signage. We are, we want to get started as soon as, with your approval, as soon as we can get our construction plans fully permitted. So sometime in the spring, we intend to start construction. And then we're about a hundred-and-fifty-day build-out now. It used to be about a hundred-and-twenty. Things are running a little bit slower since with staffing and supply chain things are still affecting construction. And so we would have coffee and donuts available sometimes next fall it would be. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, it's been a pleasure working with your staff.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Anyone wishing to come forward in favor of this plan, all proponents? Seeing none, anyone wishing to come forward opposed to the plan to give comments? Seeing none, I will make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case 417-14. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 004-2023, a resolution to adopt a final development plan for Duncan within the Austin Park Plan Development under zoning case 417-14 for landzone PD5, planned mixed-use development district. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves a final development plan for Duncan under zoning case 417-14 and adopts the zoning commission recommendation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
You're now moving to, I will make a motion to open public hearing, zoning case 457-22. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Zoning case 457-22 is now open. The following will be the order in which this hearing will proceed. Staff will give a report, the applicant will be given a time for a presentation. All proponents and opponents will be given time to speak with a time limit of three minutes on each of the speakers. When you come forward, please give your name and address for the record. The board will close the public hearing prior to taking final action. Mr. Carlson, have the legal requirements for this hearing been met?
They have.
Do you have a recommendation from the Miami Township Zoning Commission that you could provide as far to your report at this time?
I do. Thank you, Board. The final public hearing for you tonight is another final development plan for ZC 457-22, the Meyer Plan Development, specifically review of a Jiffy Lube site on Outlet D of the Meyer Plan Unit Development. Again, here's an overview. The property was rezoned earlier in 2022 to an SP PUD property with an outline there of what Outlet D would look like. Take another look here at the full site, full preliminary plan, Outlet ABC across the top, and then D being sort of central on the western side, directly to the east of an existing stormwater basin that was proposed to be improved as part of the full-site Meyer development. Part of conversation with Meyer, again, is this is a sort of complex development. Much of the conversation with the zoning commission has been that surrounding areas on the remainder of the Meyer site would be installed as a final development plan would come forward. So we will be looking at Outlet D as well as some of the surrounding areas as proposed as part of this development. Here's another view of an aerial image staff took earlier this, or 2022 in November. This is a outline showing the boundary of where Outlet D, the Jiffy Lube, would be developed. Here's another view of where it would be developed, as well as the existing stormwater So zoning commission did recommend approval and a four-to-zero vote with several stipulations. The first being that all site features essentially, again, surrounding the Jiffy Lube site as part of the Meyer final development would be installed as part of the certificate process for this. So you'll see in a moment, much of the landscape islands in the parking, as well as the stormwater improvements for improved landscaping would be installed with Jiffy Lube to ensure that the Meyer site is following the schedule of some of these outlots. Number two, similar to the previous case, in case there are modifications in the right-of-way permit process through ODOT, zoning commission recommends staff be able to approve minor modifications in the permitting process. Three, applicant must provide updated building elevations to meet Article VII. We'll review that item in a moment. Updated site plan, light poles, we'll review that in a moment. And then signage must comply with Article 41. This was centered around, it's sort of an inherent stipulation, but there was more signage shown on the development plan than what would be permitted under Article 41. Zoning Commission just doubled down and recommended that they be required to meet Article 41. So looking at the site plan, primary access would be internal to the Meyer development, connect to private roadways. This has still been reviewed with Montgomery County, just ensuring that they feel comfortable with connectivity. Same with ODOT, waiting on any comments back from them through traffic impact study. The developer has been working pretty actively with ODOT to get this finished. So far, there's not been any comments that staff is really concerned with. There'll be some minor striping issues on 741, but otherwise, nothing else major. Terms of site details, the applicant has met all requirements in terms of dumpster enclosures, providing adequate bike racks. Other site details, they have met Article VII. Here's a specific landscape plan that covers both the Jiffy Lube site and sort of its portion of parking tree islands, as well as the retention basin landscaping plan. This was shown as part of the preliminary plan, but in greater detail, they have met their minimum standards for landscaping and for frontage screening. They kept the frontage screening between the building and the basin, knowing that a lot of landscaping would be going into the basin rather than pushing it all the way out to 741. Felt that it would thrive and do better here. Lighting level, they do not exceed maximum lighting level or color temperature. The only item that I believe has now since been fixed, but zoning commission stipulated was there was a mislabeling of light poles. That's all that is related to, but otherwise met the standards, met the design standards. It's just fixing a label on the landscape, on the lighting plan, pardon me. Here's a view, again, this is one of the areas where there was more signage shown than what is typically permitted. The long banner will have to be reduced to sort of minimal standards compared to what's being shown. But generally speaking, the plan has come along in terms of meeting our building material standards. The only area that is being modified, being worked on by the applicant, is making the entire white striping up top of brick material rather than what is currently EPIS. The applicant has stated that they are okay with this, they're working on the plan, they just had some time constraints getting that in to staff to be prepared for this meeting. But again, it is stipulated, and they are more than happy to make that change. Here's another view. So again, the stipulations of approval are substantially items related to quick updates that are either in progress, already have been submitted to staff, or are covering our bases with potential review through our Department of Transportation. If there's any questions or concerns, be happy to discuss.
I have one question. So the new landscaping that's being proposed in the retention basin area, who will be in charge of maintaining that?
So that would be Meyer. Meyer continues to own and lease that site, so they will be in full maintenance of the entire basin still.
So no additional burden on the township for that?
Nope.
In basically public access?
Yes, sir, that's still Meyer property. And then part of that design was to prevent having to do sort of wild grass maintenance. They're trying to keep it contained, so there is still mowable grass, but then allowing some sort of natural buffer to grow to help screen and try to screen the existing infrastructure, which isn't the prettiest today. So certainly will be an improvement, introduce trees into that bed.
Any questions for Mr. Carlson?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Board.
All right, we will now hear from the applicant.
Brian Smallwood, Bullport Engineers, 4454 Idea Center Boulevard, Beaver Creek, Ohio. As always, Alex has done a good job presenting this here tonight, and really, I'm here just to answer any additional questions you might have.
Seeing none. Anyone wishing to come forward in favor of this plan? Anyone?
I'm not in favor, I just have some concerns.
Okay, well, if you want to come forward and state your name and address for the record that you are in favor of the plan and express your concerns, we'll have a limit of three minutes for comments.
My name is Joanna Dare, 5691 Cobblegate Drive, Dayton, Ohio, 45449. I think that this is a nice improvement that's going to be there, you know, us as the community, we've spoken, there's nobody opposed to any of this activity. The only thing that we are concerned about is added noise and, of course, added traffic. With this layout with the Jiffy Lube, I am here sent tonight to relay and ask a few questions, so I don't know if they're going to be answered or not. It's not that anybody is opposed to it, but one of the questions is, is the fact that there's two other oil change places, you know, Valvoline on the corner and then Take Five, which is directly across from Meyer next to McDonald's, and now we're going to get a Jiffy Lube, what does happen later on with the township's plan if in the event that the business, you know, sort of like decides to pull out? I mean, we are getting into a crazy economy. Has anybody thought about that going forward? I know that's not an answer that you could probably give now, but it is just a thought. We would hate to see all of that just start looking like, you know, failure. Now, the other thing is, is that, again, added noise. Alex has been wonderful helping with us, and Myers has been on pretty good behavior lately aside from the holiday. So I'm pleased. I mean, as a resident, that's really been a living hell for us. But as of last few days, that rumble has started again from the top of the building, and if it's not the top of the building, we kind of need to figure out what it is because it comes in our roof. So with these new buildings that's coming in, with this wonderful and beautiful landscaping that's going on, what we are concerned about is added noise. I think that this is all great. I think that we need to build the community, it's going to be easy access for everybody to get to things. I think that's great. But I still want to maintain and protect my community. So has anybody thought about that, like for added noise? I mean, obviously, these buildings is going to have units on tops of their buildings, deliveries, things like that. Has anybody thought about any of that, just going forward, to maintain it for the community that is directly behind them, all of Cobblegate and Orchard Run? Okay? So these are things I would like for everybody to think about, not only just for now, but for future and for our well-being. And I know Alex mentioned something about working with ODOT to see about traffic activity. I don't see that would be a problem there, I really don't. But I know there is a car wash that is pre-planned, and I know where it's going to be on that map. That's going to be an oppose for most of us, because if anybody has recently went past Flying Ace and I waited to try to get in myself when the weather broke, it was insanity with the cars lined up to get in and out. So I really would like to take a time now.
Thank you, Ms. Dare, your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Please consider ahead of time on that car wash. Sorry. Sorry, I just needed some time.
Anyone else wishing to come forward in favor of the plan? Seeing none, anyone wishing to come forward opposing the plan? Seeing none, I will now make a motion to close the public hearing for zoning case 457-22. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
Prior to making a motion on the resolution, Mr. Carlson, can you confirm that should a business go out of business, the owner of that property would still be maintained, would still be required under our zoning code to maintain and upkeep the property?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you. I will make a motion on Resolution 005-2023, a resolution to adopt a final development plan for Jiffy Lube within the Meyer Plan Development under zoning case 457-22 for land zone SPPUD, Special Purpose Plan Unit Development District. Therefore, be it resolved, the Miami Township Board of Trustees approves a final development plan for Jiffy Lube under zoning case 457-22 and adopts the zoning commission recommendations. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
All right, we have no further public hearings. Department head comments. Chief Stegelmeyer?
I have none.
Mr. Schweigert?
I have none.
Mr. Carlson?
I have none.
The administration, Mr. McCord?
I just wanted to remind you all that we did get some feedback from the county auditor regarding the potential options on the police levy, and Chief Stegelmeyer, Mr. Snyder, and myself will be bringing forth a recommendation at the January 17th meeting.
Thank you, sir. Chris, Mr. Snyder?
I've none at this time.
All right. Elected official comments. Our newest, not yet elected, but appointed, Mr. Klingerman, any comments?
None at this time. Thank you very much for the activities this evening, and you're off to...
Mr. Posey?
I have none.
Mr. Culp?
I have none.
I would just like to welcome Mr. Klingerman and congratulate him on being appointed as our fiscal officer. I look forward to working with you, sir.
Thank you.
We have no work sessions. I will make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of a conference with attorney for a public body concerning disputes involving that public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action in accordance with ORC 121-22 at 6:57. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Morris?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Culp?
Aye.
We're going into executive session, there will be no further action, and we will adjourn from executive session. Thank you all.